The meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the May 3rd County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, normally there's somebody in the front counter up here and they could help you with that. With that, we'll move on to routine business. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is a motion to approve the county commission meeting minutes from 4/26/2016 and the city or the joint county cities of Sioux Falls Council meeting minutes from 4/26/2016.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I make a motion to approve but amend the April 26th commission minutes with a correction to reflect that Jason Reeves gave the briefing on the bid opening for the seal, crack sealing coating for 2016 and approve the, obviously, the joint meeting stuff. So there's a correction on the county minutes and approval on the joint minutes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $315,984.53. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the bills.
A second.
A motion, a second. Is there any comments? Commissioner Barth.
You know, last week, we held off two items and I wonder if the auditor would care to comment on
Thank you.
those bills.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz with the Auditor's Office. Last week, when I did approve those bills, one of the items was at the bottom of the page and the other was at the top on the thing I got, so I did not catch it. However, we did start looking at the item right at, because we were listening to it on the commission meeting on our computers downstairs. And it would appear that, under certain circumstances, that the system does allow for a double in there. Normally, it does not, but sometimes when an invoice gets used twice for a partial billing, the same invoice number will pull that in. So we found out we had a little glitch between the bill system that we enter at AP and the AS400. We had IT looking into it and we really didn't find a solution to that. There is a warning that comes up and the staffer, when something's printed double, there's a warning that comes up and the staffer did not see that at that time. So we'll monitor the situation and see if there is a fix for that system.
So is it a $6,000 bill or is it a $3,000 bill?
It's half of that. It was entered twice, so it's the $3,000 bill.
And you only paid it?
Was it paid twice?
Pardon me?
Was it paid twice?
No, it was not. We pulled it.
Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second on the bills. Did we vote? I don't think so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaw County Highway Report for May 2016, which is on file at the Auditor's Office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions. Good morning. Are there any questions on personnel?
Make a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
A motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognize significant employee anniversaries for May 2016.
Hi, good morning. Maggie Gary from Human Resources. We have four employees celebrating significant anniversaries. We have Krista Bast from the State's Attorney's Office, excuse me, from the jail, Peggy Thompson from the State's Attorney's Office, and then Scott Doobie from the Sheriff's Office, all celebrating 10 years. And then we have Linda Young from Emergency Management celebrating 15 years of service. So we want to thank them.
Thank you, Maggie. Are there any of them here?
No.
I didn't see any.
I didn't see anybody either.
Okay. And item C is recognize significant volunteers in county government for April 2016.
And then for our volunteers, we've had 200, over 260 volunteers volunteer in October, or excuse me, in April. So we're going to thank them for their service.
Maggie. Item number six is application for abatement with Cal Health. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is authorize the county auditor to publish invitation for bids for Minnehaw County Administration Building Roof Replacement. Is there a motion to? Mark.
Hi, Mark Crin's Facilities Department. I can answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions on this letting of a bid for a roof replacement on the administration building?
Mark, I know you guys had some engineering done and there was some publicity that was generated. I get a lot of questions about it. Could you just update the public as to what you learned through the engineering report?
Yes. Greg Henestad from Structural Engineer Associates looked at the roof and he had no concerns with the load of the rock on the roof. So his recommendation is we can replace the roof with what is existing up there right now.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion to approve.
A second.
A motion, a second, to authorize a publication. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. Item A is the first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish notice of hearings to consider rezoning number 16-02 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District property legally described as the east 464 feet of the southeast quarter of Section 26, Township 101, north range 48, west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Minnehaw County, South Dakota, located southwest of the intersection of South Dakota Highway 42 and County Highway 111. Good morning, Kevin.
Morning. This item is the first hearing, as you just heard, so this is to set a hearing date. Staff is requesting the hearing date for this rezoning item be set for May 24th, 2016. At the planning commission meeting for this item, this was unanimously approved on the April 25th planning commission meeting, so if there's any other questions?
Is there a motion to set this hearing for May 24th?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kevin. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien, DPO number 55656, in the amount of $11,659.28. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. Commission Office has received an application for a compromise and release of DPO 55656 in the amount of $11,659. The lien is in the name of both the applicant and her ex-husband. There is no real estate transaction involved or other obvious immediate need to resolve this lien. The applicant requests compromise and release in full as it applies to herself, leaving it the entire amount solely in the name of her ex-husband. The applicant is currently involved in a bankruptcy proceeding and aware that a bankruptcy filing does not remove the obligation of a county aid lien. County services were provided between 2005 and 2011 by the Human Services Department and the Public Defender's Office. One charge of $75 recorded in August of 2011 was also for services provided by Moody County. And as you know very well, you cannot take any action on a lien that was incurred by another county. Couple was married in December of 1997, divorced in March of 2009. Almost $11,000, $10,991.88 of that county aid lien was incurred during the marriage. It appears all of the assistance during that time was provided to the applicant's ex-husband. And with the exception of $75 in public defender charges, the entire amount was medical assistance following an ATV accident. It appears the remaining $667.40 was provided to the applicant's ex-husband after the marriage ended, again with the exception of that amount from Moody County. The applicant does not list a total income. However, the applicant has provided a 2015 tax return listing a total income with her current husband of almost $27,000. The couple also submitted a sole proprietor schedule listing net profits from a car sale business of an additional almost $15,000. Applicant lists total assets of approximately $7,500, including the value of a vehicle, household goods, checking, and a savings account. Only liability is a student loan of approximately $30,000. The applicant has completed a rather extensive narrative describing her situation and her request for the compromise at this time. We've provided the application, the lien summary sheet, and a number of pieces of additional documentation for you as you consider this application. And I certainly would stand by for your questions. I do not believe the applicant is here to address you this morning.
Is the applicant here? Okay. Not here. Questions for Robert?
Well, Robert, I want, I knew income. Looks to me, her total income was $28,000. That included the business income. And her AGI was only $27,000.
In my reading of the tax return, and then also confirmed with her that the amount listed on the sole proprietor schedule was in addition to the $26,697 amount.
I guess just looking at the first page, she had wage of salaries and tips of $13,000 and then a $14,000. In fact, that was the joint return, was it not? Yes. I don't know. I mean, it's not totally relevant, but I...
Yeah. It is a joint return.
Robert, how many of these services were for the applicant herself? And how many of them were for, on the ex-husband? Were there any that were hers?
They were all, they were all the
The married couples.
Ex-husbands.
Oh, they're all the ex-husbands.
All the ex-husbands. Although certainly keep in mind, there were a number of them provided during the time of the marriage that would legally bind both of them.
Questions for Robert?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, there's no transaction coming up that's of an urgent nature for the applicant here. The, her bankruptcy doesn't clear this and I don't see an urgency to make a decision at this time. But a person is normally, I think, responsible for debts incurred during a marriage, even with the unfortunate former spouse. And I think we should take no action.
Additional comments? Commissioner Bender.
I would agree with that, except I would recommend that we clean up the liens that were recorded after the marriage was over.
Thank you. I, Jean, that's, I appreciate that. In fact, I'll make that motion right now to dismiss the liens after the marriage from the applicant and leave them on her ex-spouse.
Can I make one modification to that? Except for the lien for Moody County, for County Number 52.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, I'm assuming?
Yes.
To remove the liens that do not apply to the applicant and leave them solely on the ex-husband? And this excludes the Moody County lien. Understood? All those in favor say?
Wait a minute. Is there any discussion?
You can have a discussion. I thought we would clean up that and then we'll have discussion on the rest of it.
Oh, so we're just, okay.
We're just doing that part of it. Okay. So a motion and a second on that part. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Now back to the rest of the request. Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I'm not normally, with no money paid in and no real estate transaction, I generally don't agree with these. However, this one is medical. It's poor relief. It's not public defender, which has always been my hang-up. There's no, according to what this says, there's slim or non-chance of ever collecting a penny from him. But she's trying to get, you know, she just made a mess of her life there for a while and she's trying to get it straightened out. I think the bankruptcy and I think, but if she still has this $14,000 or whatever the amount is hanging over her head, I, I just think we're making it awfully difficult for someone who's trying to get straightened out. So I'm, I would support reducing the whole thing, compromising the whole, the entire thing.
Additional comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I appreciate Commissioner Kelly's comment. I think we should let this settle down for a little bit after we, now that we've taken this first action and perhaps review it again. But I am not quite ready to make that decision at this time. That's my view.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth, Bender.
I would just agree with that, that there's no real pressing need to address this right now and, you know, there is the duty to support. I'd rather reevaluate it when facts made it more necessary to look at it.
Additional comments?
No.
With a motion?
I'll make a motion to compromise the lien.
In full and leave it against the husband?
Correct.
Okay. Have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair, if we deny it, that doesn't mean it can't come back, right?
Correct. And I think, Robert, if we do nothing, if we take no action, it just stays the way it is then, right?
Correct.
So no action is needed.
No action is needed and we can leave it at that. So is there any motion? Seeing no motion, we will take no action on the rest of this lien. Okay. The next is opportunity for public comment, and this is a time when you can speak about something that is not on the agenda. I would ask you to please limit to five minutes or less. We have a full agenda today with several public hearings, so. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madam Chair, Honorable Mayor, who's probably still basking on the concert last night.
Mr. Colby, would you just identify yourself, please?
My name is Robert Colby, citizen of Minnehaw County. I received my car license yesterday and I was looking at it and I saw that there was a charge on each vehicle for Highway Patrol, which prompted me to think about an issue that I've always thought of as something that we, as the county, need to address. In the old days, we used to talk about reputation. Today, we talk about brand and I would say that the County Commission brand, Minnehaw County Commission brand, is not as illustrious as some people would like to see. It's always been a rather progressive organization in spite of the fact it's been underfunded for all of the activities that it does. Excuse me. But for this dollar for the Highway Patrol, one of the things that I've prompted, a thought that I thought would be good for the community and the state, and the county should be pushing for that, is when we formulated the, when we formulated the ambulance services, they were done by the communities for the, we building today? Anyhow, when we formulated ambulance services, they were to service the communities. Now, a lot of the ambulance services around the state of South Dakota, they service all of the roadways, whether state or federal, and even, of course, also the county highways. But they don't get reimbursed for their services. It would be nice if the counties would go to the state legislature and maybe add a dollar for each vehicle in the state to go to ambulance services provided on state and federal highways. This is a service that we of South Dakota provide for the traveling public, the ambulance services, that is. But they don't get remunerated for that service. It's a gratuity that they do. Now, if the state would match that at the same time, because the ambulance service will be serving local people, I mean, the people around the community and South Dakota citizens, but an awful lot of the ambulance services are for people who travel from out of state. And it would seem reasonable that if the highway gas tax money would go for mowing the grass on the interstate, that we certainly should use some of that gas tax money for giving emergency medical service to the traveling public that goes through our state. Now, we can provide some for our local travelers and that's why I would promote the dollar a vehicle for local service that's provided for, if Commissioner Barth is traveling in Custer County and has an accident, they provide it. But if somebody from Ohio is going through and goes through Custer County, who gets reimbursed for the ambulance service? No one. The ambulance service doesn't and they are out there holding the bag and you all know that there's an awful lot of need for the funding for local ambulance services. I've always been one that if you can't come up with a potential solution for some problem, that you shouldn't just complain about it. This would be an avenue for which the local people help support ambulance services across the state and the state would help support the ambulance service for the traveling public going through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colby.
And have a pretty good day and may your brand get better.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Limiting your time to five minutes or less, please.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Madam Chair. My name's Matt Walls. I'm a resident of Minnehaw County. I'm here as a public citizen and I'm here to give you some information that you may not know and encourage you to do, or to consider some things around alcohol policy in our county. I'm also in the process of starting an alcohol policy alliance in South Dakota to help promote good alcohol policy for folks. One of the things that a lot of people don't know is the health consequences of alcohol and alcohol use. Many don't know it's associated with liver consequences, but most people don't know that alcohol is a group one carcinogen causing, which is a known cancer-causing agent. Same classification as tobacco, asbestos, plutonium, radium, and several other things, asbestos, that we want to limit exposure to. And by the way, I'm not here on an anti-alcohol thing or anti-drinking thing. That's what I believe, what I represent is being pro-family, pro-health, and pro-taxpayer regarding alcohol. Okay? So just want to make that very clear. And when we think about alcohol and cancer, most people don't know that alcohol actually causes seven different types of cancer. Cancer of the mouth, esophagus, larynx, stomach, colon, and breast, and liver. Most people aren't aware of that. In fact, alcohol is the third leading indicator for breast cancer. One being a woman, two, family history, three, alcohol. If you talk to the Susan G. Coleman research people. By the way, you can, for backup information on this, you can go to the American Cancer Society's website, any International Cancer Group's website, or Cancer Research UK. They've done, there's hundreds of studies that have been done on this issue. So one of the things that I would encourage the commission to do and any public group to do is to look at treating, bringing alcohol policies in line with what we've done with tobacco policy. Right now, our alcohol policy is where our tobacco policy was in the 1950s. What we have now is alcohol that is very cheap, it's available everywhere, and it's heavily marketed. And if the commission has any opportunities to make alterations, to consider those aspects of our alcohol policies, I would encourage them to do so. One of the things that you may not, may or may not be aware of is what people are drinking that's causing the most harm and the most cost. We all know there's a new jail that needs to be built and nobody wants to have to build a new jail for our county. That's an expensive endeavor. So what's driving the need for that? What's driving our crime? And I can tell you, it's cheap, cheap, available alcohol. One of my friends, Dave, is going to distribute. One of the things that's going on is high-gravity or high-octane alcohol. Comes in different brands, Camel, Hurricane, Steel Reserve. Inside each can is roughly the equivalent of a six-pack of regular beer. These are sold cheap, $1.39 in some stores. This one's $1.79 right across the street.
It's still cold.
Sold cold, yep, ready to go. These are made for immediate consumption and this is not for responsible drinking. Nobody drinks a single can of a six-pack in one go in a responsible way. These are meant for one purpose. And if you look at the folks in your 24/7 program, if you look at the folks who you're arresting and law enforcement is having to deal with, if you look at who's coming to the jail, if you look at who's costing the most in terms of your healthcare dollars, it's folks that are consuming this. And it's cheap, this is available in every gas station, every convenience store, grocery store, and mini-mart in our fine city. And again, if you break it down, that's about 30 cents to 40 cents per drink out of one of those. That's pocket change. Hy-Vee last week had a full-page ad for a 175 of vodka for $8.25. That's 39 drinks in one of those. Do the math, that's 22 cents per drink. That's pocket change. That's really cheap. So one of the things that we have issues with is cheap available, or cheap alcohol available everywhere and is heavily marketed. If the commission has opportunities to limit hours of sale, marketing, signage, in terms of storefront signage, price with regard to a user fee or any other kind of minimum unit pricing that the county may have options to consider, either now or in the future, I would just encourage you to consider that. And we're available for questions. And anyway, thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, Matt, for the education. Please, Barth.
Can I ask a question? Matt, you know, I've long been an advocate of increasing the taxes on alcohol and, you know, certainly the availability has dramatically increased during, well, since before I was able to drink. But, you know, the hours of operation, the days of operation, it didn't used to be you could buy stuff on Sundays or Memorial Day or Christmas Day or at 2:00 a.m. or whatever. I know in some states, the bars open at 6:00 a.m. after they close at 4:00 a.m. Is this continuing to expand? Is this one of the reasons why we have a burgeoning issue with this? And again, I favor making them pay the cost and not making the property taxpayer pay the cost.
Jeff, thank you for the question and I, there's a lot of great research that says that the longer alcohol is available to be sold, the more problems you run into on the law enforcement side. So if you look at what happens after 2:00 a.m. versus, or what happens after hours of sale close up, law enforcement, things go down, right? There's a high correlation, especially if you can back off hours or back off days of sale to law enforcement costs and other kind of public service utilization costs. And, you know, one of the things that troubles me as a father is asking the question, what message does it send to our kids when alcohol is cheaper than beer, well, when alcohol is cheaper than juice, milk, soda, and water? By the way, the price of that black ice Camel, which is nearly a six-pack, is the same price as a 20-ounce Diet Coke right across the street. What message does that send to our kids and to our community? And just a question for you guys to ponder. Thank you so much. And Jeff, did I answer your question sufficiently?
Yes, thanks. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Matt, for coming. With that, we'll go on to regular business. Is there any more public comment? I don't think there was. Okay. That will go on to regular business, which is number 10, public hearing to conduct drainage permit number 16-13 from Bob and Mark Harden to conduct agricultural drainage on properly, legally described as the southwest one quarter, Section 10-102-52, Humboldt Township. David Heinhold. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioner. David Heinhold. Planning Department receiving an application from, to conduct drainage work in the southwest quarter, Section 20, Humboldt Township. Here's the map located. Notice of this May 3 public hearing was sent on April 15, 2016, to the five downstream landowners, which are located on this map, which includes the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks and also the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service was notified as well because there's an existing wetland that's just off the tail end of this lake that exists right here. Bob and Mark Harden, who, or Bob, Mark, Bob owns the property and Mark is applying for the drainage permit to install drainage tile on this property with the eventual two outlets located near the township road on the western side, just located about a quarter mile to the east of that existing lake right there. The proposed tile, the both four and six-inch tile, is indicated on this map with the red and four- and four, and the six with yellow. There's only one line that would be, as noted on this map, that would be a six-inch tile and basically two branches that come together at one point on the map there. There would outlet in an area that would continue on and connect with the lake eventually, and then the other area would end up going down through here. The applicant received the downstream permission from all the property owners within a half-mile of the proposed outlet, specifically the property owners just exactly west of this property, but the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks did not sign a waiver, so a drainage board hearing is required by ordinance. Just some of the things. Yesterday, I received an email, just an education component, about the letter for the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks, as was indicated with the United States Fishers and Wildlife, or Fish and Wildlife Service for the next drainage permit application. But I talked with Steve Vanderbeek of the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks, and he informed me of a few concerns that they have. This is what's known as the Stoffron Game Production Area, which is primarily a water-hunting area for public use. They have a boat ramp for the public to use, and this is, this is the area that's right here, the wetland area. He stated mostly concerns over the water quality effects with increased nitrogen from tile, that would, the effluent that would be flowing in from that. At the same time, he, he mentioned that they don't foresee any specific changes in the use or management of the game production area that's located just to the west of those two outlets. They didn't sign, as I mentioned, they didn't sign a downstream waiver, so this is required, the drainage board hearing is required by the drainage ordinance. And just going through some of the pictures that I took, this is of the northern outlet. As you can see in the foreground, this is the township right away. The applicant has cleaned out and maintained some of that, is on the township, Humboldt Township Board, the dirt in the foreground. And the applicant mentioned on the application for the drainage permit that there was a washout of the hill. You can kind of see in the background there, there's a little bit more dirt than usual, and then you have some of the crops there. So this is where one of the tile lines would go, and then branch off, as you can see on the map there. This is the yellow line, which is the six-inch tile, which would run pretty much all the way through here, as you can see the dirt right there, getting the dirt in foreground from the maintenance and the washout area. And this is that outlet looking west towards the game production area in the background, right along the fence line of the northern property owner, just to the west of the outlet. This is the south property owner, which is at the intersection, as the property continues to go southwest. This is looking northwest, up, basically straight up this, and then this curves around, goes that way. And then this is that southern branch off of it, the hill right there, curve around, and this would be the drainage area. And this is the eventual outlet, which actually a tile would end up, as according to the map, would actually go this way, and end up outletting where that intersection is. So staff finds that the, according to the Natural Resources Conservation Service map, the certified wetlands determination, there are no wetlands in the area for proposed drainage just to the east of the property. So staff finds that the proposed drainage tile locations meet all the policies set forth in the drainage plan, and recommend approval of drainage permit 1613. Answer any questions if you have.
Are there any questions for David? Commissioner Burr.
David, so the tiles terminate at the, is it the county highway? Is that, or is it the state highway?
This is a township road, Humboldt Township.
So then they go by culvert underneath, and then cross some grassy area to the lake? Is that the deal?
The applicant is here to clarify, but this would continue on and go under towards the lake there, as I shown in that picture, that shot straight west towards the game production area, it continues on and flows that way. The other one is, continues on and goes under the road, and then down here.
Okay, are those intermittent streams at this point?
They're not intermittent streams.
Okay. And is there an outlet to the lake?
Good question. This lake, there's no specific outlet on the other side. It ends up in the wetland areas, I mentioned, that the United States Fishery, Fish and Wildlife Service maintains, just over here, this is west of, so it's a little branch.
Okay. Any questions, further questions for David? Would the proponent like to speak, person who's in favor of this tiling project? Please identify yourself and give your name and your address, please.
My name is Mark Harden, 45527259 Street, Humboldt.
Thank you, Mark.
I farm the ground where the proposed tile is going. I know it was hard to see on some of them pictures. It's, what this area is, is a big hill, and all four of these spots is where the water comes down the hill, and it's eroding off the hillside. So we're putting tile up, and we're going to put inlets, and in the spots where it really washes, we're going to put a small terrace to hold the water, so it goes in the tile and not down the hill. As you could see in that one picture, you seen that pile of dirt? There's actually four, I think it's four big piles of dirt we cleaned out of the township right away, which came off of the hill.
Which is just sliding down and ended up in there anyway.
So we're trying to stop erosion, is what we're doing.
Additional questions, or any questions for Mark?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
I really appreciate the idea about stopping erosion, because I think that's, although it's a serious problem worldwide, it seems like we've ignored that problem for some time in this country. But do you happen to know if there's an outlet for the lake? Is there a stream that comes out of there?
I don't think there is, no.
Okay.
Additional questions for Mark? Mark?
Commissioner Bender. So the, what you're doing is you're taking the tile to follow where the water naturally flows, but you're just trying to take the water down, so it's not washing the dirt with it?
Trying to take it through the tile rather than over the top where it washes, so it doesn't wash the soil down the hill.
Okay. Additional questions? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone who would like to speak opposed to this project? Okay, additional opposition?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
You know, the Game Fish and Parks people routinely just don't approve of this stuff, and I, I think that there might be cases where they're correct in doing so, but I think to routinely, automatically, every time, object kind of defeats the credibility of their argument, and I wish that they would come and discuss it with us.
Additional comments, a motion?
I'll move to approve the drainage permit 16-13.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye, as opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is a public hearing to consider drainage permit number 16-09 from George Bergman to conduct agricultural drainage on property legally described as a southwest one quarter, southeast one quarter, and the northeast one quarter, Section 6-104-52, Buffalo Township. David, again.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Heinhold, Planning Department. Planning Department receiving the application to conduct drainage work in the southwest quarter, the northeast quarter, and the southeast quarter, right here, as shown on this attached Notice of this, this hearing, May 3, was given to, on April 13, to the eight downstream landowners, are located, a collection of them are around this lake, which is located in Section 6 of Buffalo Township, reference is north, very far northwest corner of Minnehaha County, where this is Lake County, and this is McCook County, right here, and that, so Diamond Lake is right here. So most of the property owners are located, the downstream property owners are located around this area, as well as just south of this, and in this area right here. So George Bargman and Brent Bargman own collective property that are located in this entire section. It's mixed throughout this, this area, where the drainage, or the drainage tile for drainage permit 1609 is to be installed to increase agricultural production and reduce soil erosion on the property. The proposed tile is four inches with six- and eight-inch main lines that would be running. There's branches that run off some of these outlets, some of the main lines there. It will flow into Diamond Lake at one, two, and then another point, which would flow into a slough that eventually runs into a wetland area that's owned by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which they have sent their stated concerns in a letter, which I've provided you, about just water quality issues and other concerns that they have over the proposed project in that letter format. I just want to go through some questions. I've talked with Brian Schultz. He addressed the letter, who wrote that, for the Graham Waterfall Production Area that's located here. So that's a primary concern, as the applicant is proposing to drain into that area. In this letter, they presented concerns over the amount, type, and effect of the proposed drainage project on their waterfall production area managed by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. The drainage ordinance requires that the county commission have a public hearing, since the applicant would not sign a waiver, and both the USFWS and the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks did not sign a waiver for this, as with the last item. I'm not sure what the reason is behind that, but stating that they won't attend the hearing was, might be related to something administrative efforts. Yeah, just go through some pictures that I took of the site. During my site, site visit and research, I noted several areas, several areas of concern that present other wetland conditions, such as hydroxic soils and other things, conditionally wet, and other vegetation that's present on-site, such as filter grasses and other types of those plants and vegetation. These areas are denoted on the NRCS Wetlands Determination Map as either a wetland, which is, meets all the criteria by the U.S. Department of Agriculture as being wetland, then farmable wetlands, which still, still meet the criteria of the USDA as being a wetland-type area. So these areas are highlighted in green on this map, which I've provided to you as well, especially around some of the drainage tile areas, which the applicant proposes to drain. And I'll just go through some quick pictures, and breaking this down to sections, starting with the first outlet, and then the second outlet right here, and then up here, goes into the third, and then the last one would be that fourth. This one is the separate one that goes into the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service wetland area that is just south of, this is the county highway 104, goes under the road there.
David, can I ask one question? I'm just sorry to, if you can flip back to that last slide quick. So all the, all the circled green areas are either farmable wetlands or other wetlands?
Yes, they're either classified as wetland or farmable wetland.
Okay, thank you.
Skip forward. This is the first outlet. This is looking west, as you can see the outlet there, some of the dark dirt there is naturally wet, has presented those conditions over time. This is the area that, there's a, just saying, grass area, this is the way we came up and drove around the property, there's a grass area that goes around. As you can see with the next picture, that'll give a more clear image, this is a picture of the lake, standing on top of the, the grass area. This goes all the way around, or pretty much all the way around the buffer of the entire Diamond Lake area, which is located to the east, or the eventual outlet of this tile. This area is looking from county highway 104, looking towards the northeast. This is the area of the proposed drainage, as you can see the hillside there. This, most of this area is classified as, is meeting those wetland criterias on the wetlands determination map that the applicant provided. As you can see, the multiple tile lines converging into that one, this would be the point, looks like on both sides of that wetland area. This is continuing on, this is a more clear view, you can see the depth, or a little bit of the depth of that channel, that grass waterway that is just east of the wetland area. This is looking north from the county highway, continuing on that, that waterway area with some of the dandelions and vegetation growing in there, and the farm field. The applicant proposes, according to this map, to run two tile lines, looks like on both sides of that. This is not classified as a wetland, as you can see on that map. This is continuing to that second outlet, just north of that, this is the delta where Diamond Lake is. This is looking southwest towards that property, the tile lines, the hillside, kind of a bad picture to show that, but you can see where it curves around and goes in those different directions. This is where that tile would run back towards Diamond Lake, and then the next picture shows that where that continuation would be, and this is where that delta is. And then this area right here is classified as a wetland. Of course, it's part of the Diamond Lake game, or that waterfall, or the game production This is that third area, just north of where that, that second area was. This, this area right here on the map is classified as a wetland, really part of the area that the tile runs through. As you can see in this map, little bit of vegetation there with more wet soils present and other things, the tile would pretty much run basically there, the hillside, and you have, looking straight north, and looking to that point, there's a little tree, and then there's a telephone pole in the background, basically in that distance, it's just looking straight towards the end, or start of those drainage tiles. And this is the, the third area, so I just have two pictures on these, this is the pond, or the wetland area in the foreground, or the slough in the foreground, say the wetland is south, that's the, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service-managed property behind me to the south of the county highway. This is looking north. And then this is the, the final picture I have, this is the wetland area that's classified on the map, and is on that green area as well. Tile, it, it did not appear that the tile would be located near that area, and the applicant can clarify their plans for that. But basically on the hillside, you can see some of the dirt there, and running down, this would outlet right into this area. So staff finds that the proposed area is not highlighted in green, meet all the policies set forth in the drainage plan, and recommend approval of drainage permit 1609 with the following condition, that the applicant must contact the Natural Resources Conservation Service prior to installation of drainage tile near the areas highlighted in green on the attached map for setbacks and other drainage requirements. And this is a fairly, this is a standard process that we have on the drainage application, even for ones that aren't brought forward to the county commission, that they contact the NRCS for any setbacks, buffers from wetland areas, or specific requirements or conditions for wetland areas and drainage tiles. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David at this time? Commissioner Kelly.
David, if, if we approve this thing, it's still subject to the NRCS findings, so the wetlands are addressed and all that stuff at that point?
Yes, that, that would be pointed out in the condition, they'd have to meet the condition in the, this approval, upon approval of the drainage permit.
Additional questions for David? This is a, Commissioner Burr.
So David, it looks like there's an outlet to the lake that goes to the north and east, is that correct?
There is.
And does that then flow into Buffalo Lake?
So Buffalo Lake is located, it's hard to see on this map, but it's located to the southeast, or further east of this property.
About two miles.
So there's actually a separate creek called Buffalo Creek, which runs through our county, this is about a mile and a half south of this location, which runs up into Lake County, does not connect with this. The two, there's some other drainage projects that have occurred around Buffalo Creek that drain into that, but they don't, they're too separate.
So what I'm wondering is, though, if this lake that we're going into with this tile is full, and it's then flowing onto a creek that connects to the next lake, is that the situation, or is this lake going to get larger and larger? Or is this lake, uh, uh, going to get larger and larger?
The, so Diamond Lake and Buffalo Lake are not connected by stream.
They're not connected?
No.
Okay.
Additional questions for David? Okay, this is a public hearing. Those who want to speak in favor of this, if you would come forward and give your name and address, if anybody would like to speak in favor of this project. No one wants to speak in favor? Okay. Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition to this project? You're in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, yep. Give your name and your address.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. My name is, uh, Mike Huthar. Um, live here in Sioux Falls, but also have some property in Minnehaw County as well, which is adjacent to, to Diamond Lake. Uh, I am a neighbor of George and Brent and Cheryl, and, uh, I'm here in support of the effort today. But I also want to bring, uh, to the attention of the county commission and, as well as others, about just some of the, uh, some of the things that I think that we should consider, uh, with any tile permit. And certainly because I am a neighbor of Diamond Lake, uh, I'd ask the county commission to consider, um, maybe some conditions in regards to this per, this permit as well. Uh, before I do that though, I do want to just commend, uh, David Heinhold, uh, your planner, uh, on this, uh, on this, uh, Minnehaw County Planning and Zoning Team. He's been very, very cooperative. He has done his due diligence, and I think he's representing not only you, but, uh, the county very, very well. Uh, you should be aware that there have been, uh, six tile permits within two miles of Diamond Lake al- already. And, uh, this will be another one, uh, that, that will occur, uh, that, that George and Brent are proposing. Um, I am here because I am a, a cheerleader of, of agriculture, you know, farmers and ranchers and, and the good things that they do. But I'm also very, very concerned about game production, habitat, uh, development and, and also habitat protection, uh, as, as well. Uh, certainly I have some specific concerns for, for Diamond Lake. Um, again, because I, I have some property along Diamond Lake. Uh, and Commissioner Barth, maybe just trying to give you a little insight on, on Diamond. It is a beautiful lake. It's about two hundred and fifty acres, uh, in, in size. Normally it's about eight to twelve feet deep. And, uh, it's got a long history of, uh, game production and, and recreation and providing good memories for, for folks. Over the last five years, Diamond Lake has dropped, uh, pretty dramatically. Uh, it's dropped, uh, at least probably four to six feet. And in the conversation that George and I had about, uh, this permit, uh, George conferred with that. Uh, he knows the lake much, much better than I, and he knows the ebbs and flows of the, of the quantity of, of that, uh, of, of that particular, uh, lake. But it has dropped about four to six feet, uh, over the last five years. Where, where you walk from my property to where the water was, to where it is now, you can, uh, you can step about, um, about fifty to, to seventy-five feet down. Uh, that's how far the, the drop, uh, has, has occurred. We also had a, a major fish kill, uh, about, about four years ago. Uh, and it had nothing to do with, um, nitrates or nothing to do with tiling or permitting. Uh, the fish kill was due to, you know, weather conditions that occurred during a very, very tough winter that we had. But it was a very, very major fish kill, uh, there, there at Diamond Lake. Since that time, of course, we've been wa, uh, monitoring not only the, the volume of water within Diamond, but we've also been monitoring the, uh, the fishing and the, and the habitat, uh, within Diamond as well. Um, we're having a hard time getting fish back at, at Diamond. We're also having a hard time getting water, uh, back at, at Diamond. Uh, Diamond Lake is a, is a closed system. Uh, it is. There's not a lot of water that flows into Diamond. Um, it does not have an extensive watershed, uh, as, as some of the topics that we just talked about in, in the last, uh, the last one. It really is dependent on, on direct precipitation. And not only is Diamond Lake down, but, but Island Lake is, is also down. Uh, it's probably truly due to a, a lack of moisture, you know, a lack of cooperation from, from Mother Nature. Um, so, you know, when we talk about this particular permit, I mean, let's, let's talk about it. Um, there is some tile that, uh, George and, and his, his, his son Brent are proposing that is going to drain right into Diamond. Common sense says, uh, Commissioner Barth, um, and team, this should increase the flow in terms of, uh, and the capacity of, of Diamond. It, it should. Uh, and for that, you know, that's, that's, uh, seems like a good thing, uh, to me. However, the jury is certainly out on, on the quality of the water, uh, that will flow into, to Diamond. Uh, one thing that has been, you know, um, has been proven is that high level of nitrates at times can certainly spur on some quality issues with, with the water. Uh, there is some, also some evidence on the impact of fisheries as well, uh, with these, with these nitrates. As I stand here in support of, uh, of George and, and Brent and, and their family and, and what they're trying to do, um, I would ask the county commission just maybe to consider a, a couple of things. Uh, and David, you know the ability to put conditions on these much better than I. County commission, you certainly know, uh, if there's an ability to put conditions on these as well. Um, tiling permits, uh, they are approved throughout the state, uh, in a very, very aggressive fashion. Uh, and it's very, very rare, uh, to ever have them not approved. And, um, uh, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, we'll leave that for future generations to, to understand. However, when it comes to this particular permit, again, I stand in support of the permit uh, for a variety of reasons, but, uh, Commissioner Hybarger, I'm sure you're, you're waiting for me to sit down, and, and I respect that. There are two things that I would ask you to consider. Number one, uh, in a letter from Steve Vanderbeek, uh, to, uh, David and, and to others, there is a comment that is made, and I think it's a great one. Previously, another neighbor who was permitted to install a drain tile project that discharged into Diamond Lake voluntarily, installed a nitrogen bioreactor as part of this project to minimize the amount of nitrogen discharged into the lake by that project. Again, voluntarily installed a nitrogen bioreactor as part of this project to minimize the amount of nitrogen discharged in the lake by that project. Um, uh, George and, and Brent, they're good neighbors. Uh, they're good farmers. Uh, they want to do the right thing. And as George and I discussed, certainly we believe that the qua, the quantity of the water will increase in Diamond, and that's a good thing. And I'm sure he doesn't want the quality to, to diminish, and nor do I. Also, Commissioner, I'm going to ask you to consider something, and I will sit down. Um, you know, we do approve a, a bunch of, um, drainage tile permits within Minnehaw County. Um, you can't imagine the number of watersheds and the amount of lakes that we have in Minnehaw County. It's a great thing. It's a grand thing, and we should really, really celebrate it. The challenge comes in terms of, you know, how do you monitor what's happening with those lakes? Now, you certainly don't have the time to, to do all that. Actually, the Game Fish and Parks and the DNR, they, they struggle monitoring all the lakes and the watersheds, even within Minnehaw County. Here's maybe just something for you to consider. I am going to encourage the Minnehaw County Commission to pick a lake or to pick two lakes within our great county. And let's analyze the impact of, uh, tiling on these particular lakes. Of course, I'm going to encourage you to choose Diamond Lake, uh, as that, uh, as that first test. To have the DNR, to have the Game Fish and Parks or any other entity, probably analyze two things. Number one, let's provide an annual report to Minnehaw County that touches on what has happened to the quantity of water of Diamond, but also what is happening to the quality of water at Diamond. I think it'd be a good case study. A good case study not only for Minnehaw County, not only for the county commission, but for the state of South Dakota as a whole. Um, you folks do have a lot of firepower. You do. I mean, I can stand up here and, as a neighbor of George and, and Brent and, and cheer them on to do the right thing for, for Ag. Uh, I can stand here as, uh, as an advocate for, for fishing and wildlife and, and hunting and things like that. Uh, but I just don't have near the power that the county commission would have. And so again, just, uh, something to consider as a condition is whether the, uh, Minnehaw County would consider uh, asking the DNR to provide you an annual report for the next five years on Diamond Lake and maybe another lake within, uh, Minnehaw County. Thank you for your time, Commissioner Chair Hybarger. I, I truly appreciate, uh, your, your service and, and the rest of yours as well. Make it a great day.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions?
No questions, I guess, but if I could comment, Madam Chair?
Okay, you can comment.
Um, well, I guess on the nitrate issue, I do believe that, uh, you know, we have had some concern on that issue. And, and certainly I've seen, uh, those bioreactors in, in action. And I think perhaps, uh, we could ask the East Dakota Water District, uh, which I am liaison to, to look into doing a study. One of their existing studies on nitrates on the, on the Big Sioux River shows that the two hottest spots on the river, which has agricultural drainage on it the whole way. The two hottest spots are just below the city of Watertown and just below the city of Sioux Falls. Uh, once it gets below Canton, it gets bad though because of stuff coming from Iowa. I'm pointing the finger east there. Uh, additionally, I guess I would say, uh, uh, you know, with your comments, uh, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, are you, uh, in as much as your term limited, are you considering running for county commissioner in two years?
This is a public hearing. So is there anyone else who's a proponent of this? Okay. If you give your name and your address, please?
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Brent Bargman. I live here in Sioux Falls, and I'm obviously part of the project that we've been reviewing the last few minutes. And so I just, I'll be brief. I just got a couple of points of clarification. Um, as a previous drainage permit was reviewed, this is, uh, there's some similar benefits from an erosion perspective. That was already mentioned. And so obviously, if you look at the layout of this land, there's some very, um, serious considerations for that as well. It is hilly. It runs into Diamond Lake, and so obviously the, the drainage aspect of this will help improve erosion as well. And, um, and so, um, the other point of clarification I will make is to, um, earlier question in regards to the overall drainage of this lake. There is an outlet. The outlet flows from the eastern edge of, um, of Diamond Lake, and it does flow, um, into a defined drainage area that does eventually end up in Buffalo Slough. So there is a, there is a drainage path for the eventuality of the water accumulation in Diamond Lake. It doesn't flow out very often, but at the highest point, um, it does actually flow out. So, just, uh, just a point of clarification there. And so, um, and again, we, um, we obviously, um, understand the, um, the importance of, uh, of the conservation of the land. You can see that we do a, a fair amount of job of maintaining, uh, boundary areas around Diamond Lake, and you'll see that that whole green area around Diamond Lake is currently grassland. It's left in grassland for a very specific reason, and that's for conservation. And so we understand the importance of that, but clearly this is a, um, the areas that we're talking about here are farmable. They've been farmed for decades. And so it's not something that has not been an established farming area up to this point. Thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bargman. Questions? Commissioner Bender?
Um, the, um, mayor politely suggested that a voluntary, uh, nitrogen bioreactor may be helpful. Is that something you would be willing to consider?
Yeah, we haven't looked into the, um, the aspects of that yet. I, I spoke with Steve Van Beek, and so I, I spoke with Steve, and I was aware of that, um, that request. It came, uh, from a, from another project that was on Diamond Lake. As it was, as, as Steve presented it to me, it was a situation where the, um, that particular landowner was actually crossing Game Fish and Park land with the tile. And so that was part of the consideration that went into that nitrogenator going into that project. And so, um, so our, our project does not cross Game Fish and Park land. All of the drainage is onto our own land. But clearly that's something that we will have to take a look at, but we don't, I don't have the detail for that right now.
Commissioner Kelly?
Um, do you have any idea? I, I think the bioreactors are part of the waters of the US DLEPA has done. Uh, are, are they in the vicinity of a thousand dollars apiece or?
I, I, I'm sorry. I, I don't know the details, Commissioner Kelly, on, on what the actual cost is. The first I had heard of is when I met with Steve, and I went through this whole project with Steve Van Beek out at the Game Fish and Park. And he did mention that, and then it's progressed pretty quickly since then, so I haven't had a lot of time to research what, uh, what that aspect is. But, but clearly we can certainly do that.
Any other questions, Mr. Bargman? Commissioner?
Uh, David, could you tell us, do you have an estimate on what those reactors cost?
Commissioner, I, David Heinold, Pining Department. I, I don't know the specific cost of it. I, I think briefly, I've only ever seen it, so I, I can't.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Benega, I know that in Iowa that, uh, the state subsidizes their installation. And I was at a East Dakota Water District meeting where they had some surplus money from the DNR, and I suggested that it might go in this direction, uh, to help, uh, you know, partner with farmers to install it, especially on more extensive, um, uh, you know, if you're only tiling two hundred feet, uh, and it's, it's not, you know, going like crazy. But if you're doing, uh, four hundred acres or eleven hundred acres, or I think we've had some that were some thousands of acres, didn't we Cindy? Um, anyway, I, and I guess, I, I want to just touch on my concern about having an outlet. Uh, I know that Buffalo Slough there, uh, has an outlet. And that outlet is controlled by the Game Fish and Parks people who put a board in to control the level of the lake. And they, they objected to tiling projects adding water to the lake, but they actually, by putting the board in at their dam, uh, control the level of the lake, and so, uh, that seemed to me to be, uh, a little two-faced of them to do that. I keep planning on taking the county canoe out to, to look at that dam, but I haven't done it yet.
Additional questions?
If I could just add one more thing. Mayor Mike has generously offered, uh, cost share on the cost of the nitrogenators, the biodegraders as well. So just, we'll, we'll consider that. Thank you.
You have no idea how much you're getting into. Just kidding.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any more proponents to this project? David?
David, again, Pining Department. I just want to point to Commissioner Benega's question. Found a resource from South Dakota State University. This basically says for, and this was, this is done by, this forty to sixty acre drainage areas probably average about eight thousand dollars. And that doesn't specify. So that's.
How many acres do we have in this project? But they wouldn't all need, they wouldn't all need the bio?
We've got six hundred and forty acres in section.
And how many acres did you say it would cover?
It's three quarters of section, so.
But how many acres did you say a bioreactor?
Forty to sixty. This is the average. That's the drainage areas, forty to eighty acres, sorry. Not sixty.
That's a lot of money. And it probably would need bioreactors everywhere anyway. Uh, thank you, David. Um, propane, are you a proponent? Okay.
Eric Teasland with Dakota Tiling. Um, I'm the contractor on this project. Just to shed a little light on the bioreactors. Um, I, I've installed bioreactors before in cooperation with SDSU on some research projects, um, so I'm very familiar with them. The eight thousand dollar cost, um, is accurate, and you would need a bioreactor at every outlet. Um, so here we have three different outlets into, um, Diamond Lake. Essentially what they are is a inline structure that diverts water through a, uh, biodegradable material, usually wood chips. Um, that pit of wood chips is sized based on the number of acres drained. Um, in, in these projects, you know, he talked about forty to eighty acres. Um, that is a, you know, tiled area. You know, each of these outlets probably only drain, you know, ten, ten acres maximum. I don't remember, with SDSU, I thought they looked at a feasibility for bioreactors at something greater than a twenty acre tiling, uh, area of tiled ground. So just wanted to offer a little bit more information on bioreactors.
So all these are acre, all these are smaller, and most of the ones that are put in are more of tests at this point, the bioreactors?
The state has three, or SDSU has three of them around as tests. I know there are several that have been put in as actual, um, large working systems. But those, I, I mean, they, they aren't published or documented where they're at. The ones I'm aware of are the ones that I've installed.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
And did you say that all of these drain areas are less than ten acres that they're draining and that usually they put them in at over twenty?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because the primary costs of the, of the, uh, a bioreactor are the gates that control the level of the water inside the, um, wood chip bed. You, you need one going in and one on the outside. They run anywhere from, uh, eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars apiece. And, and then you have to find the, the biomatter to fill the pit. The pits are also plastic lined.
Okay. So all of these are under the twenty acres?
Yes.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Madam Chair, uh, without any opposition, I guess, uh, I was going to make a motion to approve this.
I was going to finish the part of it, because you should at least ask. If there's, I have to ask if there's any opponent? I was going to finish the part of it because you should at least ask if there's, I have to ask if there's any opponents to this project. Is there anyone speaking in opposition to this project? Okay, no one, now you may have a motion.
Thank you. I make that motion.
And what was your motion?
To approve this drainage project.
With the condition number one. There's one condition on this which was, um, applicant must contact the NRCS prior to installation of tiles near the areas highlighted in green. Okay, this is, motion to approve with condition number one. Is there a second?
Also a second.
And a motion and a second to approve. Any other comments? All those, Commissioner Benega?
You know, I, I think some of the points that have been brought up about, uh, watersheds and drainage permits, the state has always, excuse me, been more than interested in taking over drainage permits throughout the whole state. And I'm wondering if at some point, and I'm not going to put this in the motion, but I think that maybe we should contact them and ask them what they're doing to track some of the water quality related issues because it, obviously it's either not being done very well because we don't know much about it or it does need to be done in more of an extensive manner.
Additional comments? I have a motion and a second to approve with condition number one. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Go on to item number 12, which is a public hearing to consider a motion to, um, declare property legally described as lot four block two, Corson Fox addition 102 dash 48, Brandon Township, a public nuisance and enact South Dakota qualified law 21 dash 10 verse six, 10 dash six deferred from January 26, 2016. Kevin?
Hello, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Uh, as you just heard, this, uh, property is to declare a public nuisance or to consider a public nuisance. Uh, you've heard this item before. Um, the location of the property is at 26009 482nd Avenue. It's a location map. Uh, you, and last time you heard this was on January 26 of 2016. At that time, it was, um, decided to give the applicant, or the landowner an additional 90 days to comply with the ordinance. Since that time, uh, staff has been sending mailers, they've sent a reminder letter of the deadline on March 7th. Uh, the staff has also sent, uh, a public hearing notice to the applicant and public hearing notice to all the, the surrounding property owners within 500 feet of the, the subject property of this meeting. Uh, since the, the last meeting, the applicant has been doing, uh, some considerable work on the property and I'll go through some of the, the photos here. Uh, this is kind of an overall photo of the front yard. As you can see, uh, the front yard, he started putting up a fence and he is in compliance with the fence. He took down the, the kind of little front portion of the fence and has put it in line with the front of the house. Uh, this is the, some photos of all the corners of the fence. So you can see, um, uh, when I was out there, it looks like he is putting, putting the string line on the, the property pins. And so it is, without surveying, it just looks like it's correct. Uh, the front yard has been considerably cleaned up and there is the, the van and the camper there that are both licensed. Uh, then a couple of bicycles and chairs for recreation, I suppose. And this would be the backyard taking photos over the fence. Um, the, once you get inside the fence, uh, things have remained largely the same as what they were prior, uh, to the last hearing. And we'll go through that, lots of, of lawn mowers and, and parts. The, the horse trailer has been, is new from the last hearing. A couple of cars in the side yard. Another picture from the side yard in the back alley. Uh, this is looking, uh, from the south, uh, property line, uh, looking towards that little shed and you can see some other lawn mowers and the, uh, two toys, the kid toys there. And on this side, you can see the building materials and, and buckets and tires that have, uh, may become problems and a, and a recliner. Just, uh, we have lots of pictures of the old conditions. Um, just to kind of show that, uh, these items have essentially moved from the front yard to behind the fence. If you want us to go through those. Staff would like to notice or recognize that the fence does help reduce a lot of the visual problems with the, the, the property. However, with the public nuisance ordinance, uh, including that whatever is dangerous to human health, whatever renders the groundwater, air, food or hazard an injury to human health, uh, i- is all part of the, the, uh, public nuisance ordinance. And as, just by placing these behind the fence, some of these items may still ren, be a public nuisance. I would like to specifically point out tires and buckets, uh, as a mosquito source. And the, uh, if there are buckets there that are full of oils or other contaminants that may be dripping onto the ground. We received one phone call, uh, from a neighboring property who reported a rat coming out of the property. Those are all concerns from the staff, um, and the neighbor. So, uh, considering the, the cleanup, um, and the fence, and I guess it's up to you as a planning commission to decide whether or not he is complying with the public nuisance ordinance. So, if you have any questions?
Questions for Kevin? Kevin, what would be cleaned up inside the fence?
It, it, it's, it's tough to say. Uh, as I noted before, can I have a list of, of what is on the property? The items of concern still are the tires and the buckets. It's hard at this point to say that the, the parts, that the, like the lawn mower parts and stuff are, are visually a problem, but when you can't see them behind the fence, I, I would admit that it's hard to say that that is a public nuisance because they're not going to be producing, um, oils or anything just by parts alone. Uh, the chair, uh, could become a problem as it deteriorates outside, that sort of thing.
Additional questions for Kevin? This is a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak, um, in support of, um, cleaning up this property? Just give your name and address.
Uh, Steve Anderson, 26011 482nd Avenue, I got the property just south of this.
Thank you.
What you're missing is, uh, 10 cars parked around Corson. Uh, two in the backyard, the rest are on the street. They're licensed, but they never move till it snows. And that backyard, like mosquitoes and rodents and stuff, it's, it's been cleaned up before. The county's cleaned it up before and it comes right back to that condition. I mean, they're just, uh, I don't know what the problem is, the stuff ain't used, he don't use it, he just collects it. So that's about all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Just note for the record that I did receive one phone call this weekend, which was not from Mr. Anderson. Um, just stating that there are a lot of cars that are marked, parked around the city of Corson that belong to the, um, to the person of this nuisance that, um, stay until they have to be moved to a different location. And that was the contention of the person that called me. Is there anyone else that wants to speak as a proponent to this? Okay, the opponent, would you like to say anything? You'd have to, you, you gotta come to the microphone and give your name and your address.
Bonnie Banghart, 26009 482nd Avenue. And Steve's been complaining about my fence because it's too close to his garage. Well, he built his garage too close to the property line. And it's been surveyed, I had it surveyed before I put the fence up. And I put the fence three inches back from the property line, so. And I can clean up the buckets and the tires and the cars all run, so, you know, I move, I drive once in a while.
Okay, does anybody else want to speak? In opposition to this? If there's no one else that wants to speak, I'd go back to the commission for your recommendations. Commissioner Kelly?
I have a question, David. This is an unincorporated village or whatever you call them, right? So what applies, is it like, uh, like our housing developments that are out around the county? What, what rules apply? I'm sure you'd probably go to any farm and find tires and, and probably an awful lot of cars too. But does this change because of, because it's in a residential area or?
The nuisance ordinance itself does not change a residential area to agricultural area. Uh, what likely is to change is the effect because people notice it more. Uh, so we get more calls in residential area if there's problems than if it's in the, the rural area, so.
Commissioner? Commissioner Bender, sorry.
And so, when I read our, our nuisance ordinance, it appears to me that we really don't have any, um, any control over licensed vehicles that are, that are operable, that they're not addressed in our nuisance ordinance at all.
That is correct. And it, it was brought up to me, so I did take a picture of the vehicles across the street. And yes, I did look at them and they are all licensed from what I can tell, so.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Bender? I'm sorry, if I could just ask one follow-up question. And does that include, there's a tractor, I, I actually drove by the property last night and, and there's a tractor that shows up in your pictures as well and that falls under the same category? If it's licensed and operable or if it's operable?
Uh, the tractor would likely fall under the, the category of, um, the yard maintenance or the building upkeep. As something that doesn't need to be licensed, it'll just be there for, uh, removing snow, uh, I suppose. Or if he's doing work on his house, that would be what he would need a tractor for.
So the standard is more whether it's operable?
Yeah.
Additional comments or questions? Commissioner Kelly?
I, it doesn't sound to me like we've got much to stand on, even though this is a really unfortunate thing and, uh, uh, it, it's not a neighborly thing by any stretch. My, my question, and I don't know if we can address it, is vehicles not only have to be licensed, but they, in order to drive them, they have to be insured. If, if he's got all these licensed vehicles, I'm sure his insurance agent's very happy, but I'm questioning that they're all insured. And I don't know if, you know, what we can do about that, but, um, I guess the fact that he's put that fence up and taken the visual out of it is, is a factor, but, uh, I, I don't find out where we have standing to, to declare it a nuisance. That's my only problem.
Kevin, would you read that center part of that public nuisance states? The following, any deteriorated, wrecked, dismantled, derelict, derelict or interoperable property in unusable condition in its present state and which has been left outside of an enclosed permanent structure without being so restricted, this shall include deteriorated, wrecked, inoperative, dismantled or partially dismantled or unlicensed motor vehicles, dilapidated or unregistered mobile homes, trailers, boats, machinery, refrigerators, washing machines or other appliances, plumbing fixtures, furniture, automotive parts, waste building materials, junk and any similar articles in such condition. Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick comment too, as you, as you consider this issue too, there are also other subdivisions and I'm not sure if planning staff is, is, is claiming that those apply as well, but there's also one on breeding place for flies, rodents and pests and also separate garbage or refuse and rubbish, um, categories as well. So those are, it's not just the abandoned vehicle subsection. I don't know if they're recommending that those apply, but just so the commission is aware that there, there's those other subsections.
Thank you, Kristin. Commissioner Bender?
Kevin, do you have any authority to go on the property to check if in fact the, the buckets are removed and the tires are removed?
The ordinance says that we are allowed to go on the property with proper notice. So, uh, we can say we're going to be there on, on Friday and, and when we come on Friday, yeah.
Additional comments? Commissioner?
You know, it's very difficult to, uh, have to defend yourself in front of the county commission. It's very difficult to have to co, come in front of us and complain about, uh, a situation with your neighbor. So it's, the, the folks on this issue, uh, it's, it's not easy for them to come and ask us to work on their problems. I've driven by this property multiple times over the last month and I've got to say that this fence is a really recent development and I think it is somewhat of a improvement. I do regret that, you know, it appears that it's under the eve of the neighbor's, uh, property and I don't know how, uh, we let that happen on our building permit process. But I think that the, uh, the property owner has made some steps towards cleaning this up. I wish that more had been done. I, um, uh, I don't know, I wonder, Mr. Banghart, if you'd come up and, is there anything else that you would consider doing to make, uh, make the situation more livable for your neighbors?
Yeah, I need to clean up some of them lawn mowers and stuff, you know, and then the tires too. Most of the tires I keep are the ones that are good, the old ones I cut in half, you know, I cut the sidewalls out and throw them away, you know, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. What kind of timeframe do you think it would take?
It shouldn't take too long since the weather's nice, it quits raining, you know?
Yeah.
Month probably.
Jean Bender has her hand up.
Okay, Jean.
Banghart, would you be willing to then allow our planning to come out 30 days from today and, um, and verify that you have made some significant progress on the tires and the buckets?
Yep.
I think that'd be great.
Okay, is there a motion?
I apologize, do we do a motion if we find it not to be a public nuisance?
I think there needs to be a motion just to follow up in 30 days.
I would make a motion to follow up in 30 days.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to follow up in 30 days on this public notice. Kristin, is that acceptable?
Yeah, it'd just probably be at the next meeting after 30 days expires, so at least 30 days.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Get a dump truck. Item number 13 is consider a motion to prove the highway construction change order number one on the amount of 760, 726,099 dollars to the contract with Dumick Incorporated for project number MC 102 dash 104 dash 109 OL 16. DJ, I should probably let you read that.
Good morning, Commissioners, DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. Uh, just a little bit of a recap of this proposed change order. Uh, we have executed a contract with Dunick and, uh, for the milling overlay project for this year. And in 2014 and 2015 respectively, uh, we paid 138,200 dollars per mile for our overlay project and 137,500 dollars per mile for our overlay project. Those two projects did not include milling. Uh, the bid for 2016, the contract that we have, does include milling of the existing surface and it is 115,900 dollars per mile. And so you can see the extreme cost savings that we're, uh, realizing for the 2016 contract. Uh, because of this cost savings, uh, we looked at, uh, the option of doing a change order uh, to increase the mileage and capitalize on the extra work and the cost savings that we have. And, uh, in compliance with state law, uh, we are able to extend the existing, uh, unit prices that we have under contract. And so we've proposed, uh, an additional 6.8 miles of the, uh, existing overlay contract uh, to the tune of 726,099 dollars on the existing contract. And in compliance with state law, we are able to extend the existing unit prices that we have under contract. And so, we've proposed an additional 6.8 miles of the existing overlay contract to the tune of $726,099 on the existing contract. And we're recommending approval of this change order, and I'll stand by for any questions that you have.
Any questions? Commissioner Bender?
DJ, isn't it correct that part of the reason that we are getting such significant savings is because they're setting up a plant up there, and so they aren't having to truck it in, and we experience those savings as well?
That's exactly right. We look at two reasons for the big savings. They're putting a mobile plant at the gravel pit at LG Everest in Del Rapids. And so, that's a huge cost savings because of the trucking distance. They won't be hauling from Merlin Roy's or concrete materials out of Sioux Falls. They'll be hauling from Del Rapids, which is very close to the project site. And then, the other one is the oil prices this year are very inexpensive. So, we're able to capitalize on both of those savings.
Questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Is the reason we're able to do this significant a change order that the contract originally was bid as a per unit price?
Exactly. There's a few different bid exemptions allowed in statute, and the extension of unit prices under contract are one of those bid exemptions.
Additional comments or a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is consider a bid award for project number MC 261BR-16, replacement of structure 50-284-107 on Redwood Boulevard. Bids opened on April 13th.
Commissioners, on April 13th, we opened bids for the Redwood Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project. Our bid estimate was $2.5 million even. And the low bid was $2,528,832, which is approximately 1.5% within the estimate, the engineer's estimate. Swing and Construction was the low bid. They're a very reputable contractor, and we are recommending awarding this contract and executing a contract with Swing and Construction. The project, as you know, was competing for a Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant. We learned last week on Thursday that we're not successful in receiving the reimbursement grant. During the lengthy grant award meeting, it was stated and later reported that Minnehaha County did not comply with the rules or the guidelines that the Department of Transportation set forth for the bridge improvement grant. I can assure you that we did comply with the laws, with the statutes regarding our bridge improvement grants, with the administrative rules that were adopted by the state of South Dakota in October of last year. And we feel that we complied with all procedural guidelines for local let projects as outlined in the Department of Transportation's Bridge Improvement Grant Procedure document. Again, at the current time, we are, the highway department is recommending that we do move forward with awarding this current open bid to Swing and Construction. And I'll stand by for any questions that you have about the award or about the meeting that we had last week on Thursday, or anything else regarding the project.
Questions? DJ? Commissioner Bender?
DJ, I know you and I have had an opportunity to discuss this quite a bit. I'm just wondering if you could explain a little bit more about why it's being reported that Minnehaha County was not willing to comply with the regulations when you, in fact, think that you did?
So, the DOT's administration is, at the meeting last Thursday, they said multiple times that we did not comply with the guidelines as they set forth for the grant program. And the guidelines are in a document called the Bridge Improvement Grant Procedure. It's a document that they published October 29th of last year. And the interpretation of that document, I think, is where we have our differences with the Department of Transportation. And there's a section, section eight, titled "Project Development Requirements." And there's a subsection of that titled "All Local Let Projects." And so, when we look at that, and I'll read it verbatim, and this is our interpretation of this. It says, "Under the project development requirements, the following description of duties are general guidelines and can be modified through individual project agreements. As an example, an LPA, which is a local public agency, may have a large, complicated, off-system bridge that they would like the SDDOT to perform duties as described for an on-system bridge. SDDOT will consider any such request on a case-by-case basis." And then, it goes on for all local let projects. It has requirements for the local public agency that they need to meet if they're going to be letting the project through the county or through the city, because cities are allowed to follow this program as well. When I read through that, it's clear to me, I believe, that these are not requirements that need to be adhered by. And in fact, they suggest that the local public agency has to request support of the Department of Transportation, and that it's not required. And in their example, they even say that the local public agency, if they have a difficult project, can request help from the Department of Transportation. And then, the Department of Transportation will consider any such request on a case-by-case basis. So, when we read that, we know that having three professional engineers on staff and working with professional consulting engineers on the State Department of Transportation pre-qualified list, we deliver three to five bridges every year for Minnehaha County. We know that we're capable of moving forward with a locally let project, and so, that's the way that we proceeded. The Department of Transportation was aware that we had entered into design contract, and we were encouraged all along the way, from last April, basically, that the farther we can get this project along, the better it's going to look in a grant application for a shovel-ready project to be completed in 2016. We felt that the legislature, during committee meetings last year, wanted to have shovel-ready projects to show the public that they were going to be using this money right away for projects to be constructed. And so, we thought that we were going to be a frontrunner for this grant application and this project specifically. And during the meeting last Thursday, they said that we did not follow their guidelines because we had advertised the project already, and so, we were not in conformance with their guidelines. There's separate sections of this Bridge Improvement Grant Procedure that do outline processes for the plans to be reviewed and for the project to go through the Department of Transportation letting office. But we felt that by reading the first paragraph of this section, that we are also allowed to utilize the locally let procedure that was outlined here.
Commissioner Kelly?
This is really unfortunate. I think, one, we kind of based our going forward with this thing on the assurances that we were in pretty good shape with the DOT to get this approved on the bridge deal. It appears to me that, you know, you can pass all the bills you want in the legislature, but when it gets down to the details, it's bureaucrats that are not elected to make the decisions on this thing. It's interesting, they, one of the objections was the fact that we advertised it before the April 28th, 29th, whatever was deadline date or date for awarding. I think we remember, if you remember, we discussed before that had we waited until after the deadline, we probably wouldn't even gotten a bid, because everybody has already got their projects. And as much is going on in this state, they've got their projects already underway, the bids probably would not have been, if we'd have gotten any bids, they would have probably been not as competitive. The other thing is that there is a, there's a couple opportunities, I believe. One is we can appeal that decision. Is that correct?
I had requested our state attorney's office to review that, and I haven't heard back. And so, maybe Kristen can...
Yeah, I will have a briefing for you on that. I'd rather not brief it in a public hearing.
That's fine. And I, you know, we have to be careful that we don't burn any bridges, because next year, a good friend of mine, who was a lobbyist when I was in Pierce, said, "Once he walks out of the, whether the bill's defeated or accepted, once you walk out of there, you've got a bill coming up tomorrow, so you don't want to burn any bridges." But it doesn't seem to me that it's in the, following the essence of the law or what the legislature intended. I hope that they'll relook at this thing. And I don't know, I understand that Moody County was the one, it was kind of down to us or Moody County, and Moody County got the thing. We were almost equal in deal. I'm sure the traffic on this bridge is probably significantly more than, because it's a high-traffic area, I think, and it's an important bridge to branden. I just, I hope we'll look at other opportunities. I really am a little reluctant to support the bid right now, because once we do this, why, it's over. I do think that perhaps Pierce looks at Minnehaha County and says, they don't say it publicly, but, "Hey, you guys don't put any general funds into your highways." And I'm not sure that that doesn't cloud their opinions quite often. It seems our battle is with the staff, unfortunately. The commission, just like we do, you know, listens to what the staff recommendations are and stuff. I just hope that they can clarify this thing a little more, because it looked to me like they were looking for a reason not to award it to us.
Commissioner Bender?
DJ, you know, to kind of follow up on his comment, it's my understanding that if we wanted to defer this a week so that we could get a briefing from our legal counsel and further explore what our options were to make sure that a decision that we make today doesn't have unintended consequences and inability to, you know, maybe look at this and review this decision or appeal it or whatever, that we have until next week to actually approve this bid. Is that correct?
Statute allows for 30 days from the bid opening date to make an award or bid rejection. And that 30-day period ends, I think, next week on Thursday. And so, at next Tuesday's commission meeting would be the absolute last scheduled day that we have to make a determination on what to do with the bid award.
And that's what I was going to comment on, just that I believe we do have another week, too. And whatever the commissioners would like to do in the meantime, too, besides get a legal briefing, but also maybe not hurt to inquire as to why it seems like the rules weren't followed as they were laid out in this case on the award structure. So, that's my sense of it.
I'd like to make a motion to defer.
Commissioner, we have a comment over here. Commissioner Bender?
Benega?
Benega, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I have a question about, obviously, the 80% that we were requesting from the states in jeopardy, so to speak. So, that 80% is going to have to come from someplace else. So, I would like to have some idea next week where that projected support would come from if, in fact, we aren't successful, and what project's going to be, frankly, removed from the list because of that. And then, in reference to the general fund comment, I don't know if you can put this in a request or required category, but the whole issue of the fact that we spend significantly dollars, significant dollars on general fund expenditures for public safety and judicial changes that now have affected the growth and lack of growth of penitentiary construction, and how we now are taking some of those same prisoners that we didn't have before, that we are now getting. But that certainly can't be part of the discussion. It just needs to be, people need to be reminded that there's a reason why we don't use general fund dollars for highways. But the real issue is that we do need to have another plan now that this plan has been put into jeopardy, and where those dollars would come from, and we've got a week to decide that. And I would recommend that it does get deferred.
And I can speak to that, too, if I'm allowed.
Do you want to speak to that now?
Can I get a second on my defer?
We have, Commissioner Kelly had a motion to defer one week. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Now, continue discussion.
Okay. Regarding the budget, the Bridge Improvement Grant Program is a reimbursement grant. And so, the State Department of Transportation did require all counties to budget for the entire project cost, even though they're applying for a grant. And once the project has been started or completed, then it's a reimbursement program. And so, we do have funding available for the entire project within this year's budget. And that, receiving the grant or not receiving the grant doesn't require us to cancel any other projects or delay any other projects. That's covered. I have a copy of our long-range plan budget spreadsheet right here, and we've projected out the numbers if we do not get this grant and we do meet our end-of-year balance projections just fine for the next five years, even without receiving this grant. We do have to move a few different things around, just in the long term, but that's certainly not going to jeopardize our funding for the five-year plan. And so, that is one thing that we did consider before we made the recommendation for a bid award to the commission. And so, we have looked at that. During the commission, the Transportation Commission meeting last week on Thursday, the grant was originally an 80% state-funded, 20% local share grant. They did ask us if we would consider accepting a 60% state and 40% local grant, to which we stated that we would. And then, they looked at their available funding after awarding the rest of the projects, and they ended up having just over $1.2 million available. And when you calculate those numbers out, it's actually about a 40% state, 60% county cost share, had we been awarded that $1.2 million grant. We said that we would happily take the $1.2 million instead of the 80/20 cost share that was originally part of the grant. And they still, like we know, decided to award that to Moody County. So, Moody County received a $1.2 million grant, which is not an 80/20, like they had requested. I don't know what their percentage is, but it's less than 80/20.
Just a question, DJ. Do they spend all this money and then at the end decide what they got left? I mean, I, you've got a pot of money that they had to work with, $8 million or whatever it was. And then, they just start approving, and this happened to be the last on the lead, and there was only a million and two left?
The way that their process worked this year, it seemed, was they do have the pot of money, and they know how much money is in there. And they go through, and they, the administration or the staff prioritizes all of the rehabilitation projects, and they also prioritize all the replacement projects. And then, they recommendation to, or they make a recommendation to the Secretary of Transportation, and the DOT staff and secretary come up with what they believe is the best recommendation for the Transportation Commission. They presented that last week at the Transportation Commission meeting. And then, according to the statute and the administrative rules, the Transportation Commission can take the administration's recommendations, or they can do whatever they want. And so, one of the things that they have to look at is using that pool of money and their prioritization of all the projects. When it gets down to the very end, do they take that last project and award a partial grant? Or do they decide to award a different project that better fits the budget that they have available? And in this case, they chose to, they proposed awarding the grant to the next prioritized project, but at a lesser dollar amount, changing that 80/20 cost share to a 40/60 cost share.
And are the priorities determined on a numeric?
It's a numeric objective scale that is outlined in the administrative rules.
Thank you.
So, DJ, were there any bridges that were awarded prior to us? It was all rehab, and, I mean, there were no new bridges that were awarded prior to getting to our project?
We were, on the reconstruction list, so there's, like I said, a preservation rehabilitation list, and then, there's a replacement list. We were basically last on the prioritization of bridges they wanted to, or they proposed to award. And they awarded a total of five grants for replacement. And so, we were basically number five, and rather than choosing the Minnehaha structure as the fifth, they chose the Moody County structure as the fifth.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions? I have a motion and a second on the table to defer for one week. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 15 is authorize the chairman to sign agreement with MJ Dawson Roofing and Sheet Meddling in the amount of $33,561 for, for, bridge, no. Roof replacement of the Public Defender's Building. I'm stuck on bridges.
Morning, Commissioner Mark Krins, Facilities Department. The 2016 capital improvements schedule has $40,000 in it to replace... to replace the roof on the Public Defender Building. I solicited quotes from three reputable contractors here in Sioux Falls. Uh, guarantee roofing and sheet metal, um, architectural roofing and sheet metal and MJ Dawson Roofing. MJ Dawson came in with a low bid of thirty-three, or lowest quote of, excuse me, thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars. I'm requesting commission authorization for the chair to sign the contract with MJ Dawson as the contractor to replace the roof on the Public Defender Building. Are there any questions?
Make a motion for the chair to sign that agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen is authorize the chairman to sign the JBIG sub-grant notice of award, special conditions, assurances, and certification for RFP two thousand and fifteen JBIG zero one MRT group. Aaron, good morning.
Good morning. Erin Serska, Commission Office. And this is just, I'm asking for approval for the chair to to sign an extension of the grant. Uh, the grant wasn't able to be spent down in the time allotted due to lower uh referral numbers from the justice system. So we asked for an extension and it was granted through the end of September. So this is just signing the notice of award for that extension.
Questions? Motion? Approve? And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen is a briefing on the DC and Transporta- Transport Request for Proposals and No Bids Received.
Morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson, again, Commission Office. Just a briefing for you. We had a uh, a, a bid opening scheduled uh recently for DC and Transport uh RFP and we have no bids. Following up on, on that, that was, that was somewhat surprising to our office because we've had inquiries on this in uh previous months leading up to this. Uh, following no bids, we uh reached out to a number of of local providers who could be in a position to uh provide the service that we expected to receive bids from. Had some good conversations that uh there's um, uh some potential interest there, but there were individual questions, uh, issues that that they had with the uh, the way some, some things were worded in the, in the RFP. We are working for, uh, uh, moving forward, working with State Attorney's Office to uh um make contact with, with, continue contact with some of these firms. And I, I believe we will be um, uh, back uh before you, uh, for you to consider an agreement at some time uh in the near future. But uh, really just wanted to give you the update that we had the um, uh, we had the RFP out. We expected to receive some bids. We have not. And we knew, we are moving forward on this and we'll be back uh hopefully with a um agreement for your consideration in the near future.
Any questions for Robert? Commissioner Bird?
We're not in danger, Robert, of having a gap in service, are we?
We are not. The current contract runs through the twenty-first of May.
Thank you, Robert. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Commissioner Kelly?
Just a comment. Um, I thought Mayor Uether made a good point there in, in trying to work with, with the state or with the East River, East, item, the Madison Group to, to study a couple of three sample lakes. We're, we keep getting these drainage tile things brought forward and even though the state's on a path to try and take it all over, it may or may not happen. But uh, in the meantime, if, if uh, if somebody could do a study or in cooperation with us do a study to see what the ramifications are of drain tiling versus not, you know, versus what's occurring naturally, uh, I, I think it'd be a good thing just to pursue a little bit and maybe perhaps Jeff could do it with his, with his layers on.
Maybe you can ask Jeff?
Madam Chair, I actually wrote a note for Scott that I gave him when he left and uh to write a proposal to East Dakota Water District. They regularly get proposals from other places, Lake Norden, whatever, to study their water system or whatever. And uh, you know, to look at the effects of tiling, to look at uh bioreactors and how we maybe could use them, uh, see what the nitrate uh stuff is going into, into our waterways. You know, we can find out what other uh chemical products might be getting transported. And this is right up their alley and uh I'm sure they can probably get a professor at SDSU to uh sign up for a grant to, to do this kind of a study and use, use those monies. And they're right in touch with D E N R and all that. And, you know, it's interesting that uh, you know, the mayor has, has offered assistance on this. I think clearly that is uh really great news for the county and uh we don't currently have the money to do that. But uh, the, the state, the city, the mayor, um, you know, I think, working together, maybe we could make some progress. So my hope is we could bring a letter or proposal for East Dakota next week as an agenda item to uh, uh, get the concurrence of the rest of us. I didn't think it was appropriate for us to take action uh without it being an agenda item.
Thank you, Commissioner Bird. Additional old business? Then I'd like a motion for executive section for contract negotiations and legal briefings.
Go move.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Waiting adjourned.